But they are still, they still have to put them there. So we went ahead and we went and we became proactive and decided to assign them anywhere else. The second point that we wanted to look at was we wanted to revise funding from activities and events that do not function within the library's goal or mandate. So one of the hard discussions that we had with the administration is that, yes, we have money. That does not mean we need to spend that money on anything. That means that we need to reorganize and structure our library, reorganize and restructure where that money is going and how it is spent. So in the past 30 years that we've had this budget, pretty much has been a rubber stamp every which way. Nobody's ever sat the administration down to ask questions except us. So here we are, and so we want to make sure that as we go down this budget line item, now mind you, board, this proposal was created in a span of two weeks. From the time that we received the original budget, we sat down, we went in with administration to discuss these items. So there is a wider discussion to be had. But it is also important to note that a budget can be amended up or down when necessary. But it is up to the board to decide if the budget that taxpayers or that the library is using that is funded by taxpayers need to go up or down. So some line items are reduced to an appropriate measure, and if they need to be amended up at any time, the library administration or staff is welcome to present that to the board, and we will make a decision then. We also want to utilize surplus funding to increase employee salaries and benefits. We prize, we understand that we're living in an ever-changing society. We understand that the cost of living, we understand that the cost of goods are going up. We get it. But if you look in the wider scheme of things, you have to look at the hierarchy of needs. The library is on the bottom tier of that as far as needs and the impact that it has on communities. Hospitals, 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 police officers, fire departments are important to a community, and they help the overall welfare of a community. So we want to make sure that whenever there is surplus funding, that we allocate that to the best needed places. David? So some of the budget changes that we are proposing is we are asking for a $5,000 decrease in the advertising and marketing line item. In that particular line item, we asked the administration where that money was going. Some of the advertising was done in be our proud board, for the whole board who was not privy to that meeting. It was done to be our proud, the advocate, so a lot of Baton Rouge newspapers and advertisements. So we didn't need to spend $5,000 or whatever the proposed amendment was or the proposed original ask was for that advertising and marketing. So we were reducing that down $5,000. The $50,000 decrease in maintenance and repairs, that may shock some people because the line item says repairs and maintenance. But each thing that we paid for in that line item is not necessarily repairs and maintenance. So we are reducing that $50,000 into repairs and maintenance because some of the services that we have are contracted out. So that $50,000 decrease will help us put money aside to be able to hire our own building and maintenance person. So that is going to cut that cost down for us contracting out a person to come and check for leaks, and we can have our own on-staff person to take care of those things. We're also proposing a $4,290 decrease in professional services. So that is another contracted out source, whether it's newsletters or things like that. That kind of information or that kind of job can be done in-house and will justify a raise for that employee who does it. Also, we're proposing a $24,876 decrease in professional development. We are not, this library board is not, a Fortune 500 company. Professional development, I've heard it said many times talking to admin and talking to staff, you all are the degreed librarians. So administration should be tasked with the creation, the solicitation, and the education of your staff. We do not need to contract out people to come and teach your staff what you went to school to do, because that's your job. So we want to decrease that and invest that back into the system, give the administration the resources to create, to amend, and to educate your staff as any other company or any other organization will do. We're also proposing a $58,015 decrease in programming, adding a $7,000 increase in children's programs. So we decreased that original amount in programming, and we reallocated $7,000 of that to increase children programming because the administration was able to justify, board, once again, the high use in children's programs. We also wanted to do a total of $122,000 decrease in collections. That's another contracted out situation. So a lot of these may seem like, the line item may say collections, and you're thinking it's books, and half of the time, it's not books, it's another company, a middleman, we're paying in to come and do the job that our librarians were hired to do. And finally, a $6,000 decrease in technology and equipment. David, you can click. So with these proposed budget changes, we went from, Michelle, do you have that original number with the budget that y'all proposed? It was two?
Two hundred and sixty thousand, I think it was.
So 260,000. With this proposed budget, we will be able to increase our income to a total of $306,181 with the proposed changes.
Two hundred and eighty-three.
Two hundred and eighty-four. So once again, board, this, once again, board, this proposed budget can be amended at any time, as any legislative body can do. But it's to put the power back into the board to decide if that money and that line item needs to be increased or decreased. David, thank you. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Public comment on this issue?
President and would like to speak and does not wish to speak, both checked, Joshua Ebar.
Hey, how y'all doing? The way I read y'all's rules, oh, he just said it, Joshua Ebar, District Five. The way I read y'all's rules, she makes the budget, you can approve it. The only way you can amend it is if she asks for it. So you making this budget the way you did ain't right. She's the only one that can make the budget, period.
Is that correct? Let me look at the policy, hold on.
Before we read policy, I just want to make a point, and then, the policy was created and drafted by the board. Policy can be amended at any time.
But that's the current policy, right?
That, as far as the budget goes, the budget is for the board, that's why we exist. We're called the Library Board of Control. We exist to steward and direct the funds of taxpayers' money. That's why we exist.
President and opposition would like to speak, Kathy Logan.
Kathy Logan of Denham Springs. This is the fourth parish in Louisiana that I've lived in. Every parish I've lived in in my life, I have quickly joined the library and gotten a library card. My oldest memories are going to the library with my parents. It instilled in me a love of reading that got me through college and grad school and through my career, where I read every day, all day. The library is meant to rise people up, to broaden their horizons, to present them with culture, with the culture passes that they're buying, to give them the opportunity to learn to read if they don't know how, to read anything they want to read that they can get their hands on and not have to pay their money for. More than that, because I live in Denham Springs and work in Baton Rouge, I'm tired and I don't have time to read. So I am mostly exclusively the digital collection, and I read in this budget that you'd be cutting the digital collection. I voted for the millage to fund this library system. I voted for it. I answered the surveys that were sent to me, asked what was important to me in the library. I participated. I come to these meetings. I care about this, and I don't believe that some of you do. You care more about being in power and dictating what people can have access to. I voted, and you don't represent me because I don't vote for any of you directly. But I speak for myself, and I speak for people like me who want the library to be fully funded as they feel it is needed, as they presented beautifully several months ago. And to have it in a closed meeting changed to some budget that we only see what you want us to see and not the line items is wrong, and it is not representative of me.
In opposition would like to speak, Gail DeLee.
Hi, I'm Gail DeLee, and I live in Springfield. I wrote a letter to the parish councilman, and I asked them to share it with you, and I'm not certain, oops, sorry, not certain if they did that, but I'm just going to read my letter that I wrote down. I'm writing to you because of the concerns I have over the possible monetary cuts to our library budget. As a retired principal in Livingston Parish, I have seen firsthand how significant our public libraries are to the education of our students. They are also a source of pride for the citizens of our parish. Our libraries and the programs they offer are some of the best around, thanks in part to our citizens realizing the importance of them and passing the millage renewal in 2023, in spite of the no-tax sentiment most have. The summer reading program has provided the encouragement needed in many of our struggling readers to find books that interest them and not to let their reading skills fade during their time away from school. The value of this program cannot be missed. Our district has given support to many parents when they don't know how to help their child while at home. With their public library card, they can access this content. Many teachers provide this information to parents when parents say they can't afford computer programs to help their children. It was always wonderful to be able to say, this is provided to you free from our public libraries. I have enjoyed taking my grandson to the toddler sessions provided at the Springfield and Denham branches. I know these are offered at other locations as well. He is not reading yet, but our visits to the library and the activities provided during these special times will foster his interest in books and the library, which will benefit his future. We also love the book festival. In my retirement, I have become an avid reader again. The Cloud Library app is one of my most used on my iPhone. I listen to audiobooks daily. I have heard of many book clubs forming in our area because of this reason. Always my responsibility as a parent to determine what my child could read. I appreciate the fact that this was not determined by someone else's opinion of a specific book. The librarians and staff are not babysitters and are not the ones responsible for watching the children in the library. It is solely a parent's right and responsibility. Please trust the parents to determine what their child reads and not another individual. Public libraries are different from this in school libraries, where parents are not with the students during their day. Please end this political battle and allow for the full library budget to be approved. I was against defunding the police, and I'm certainly against defunding the library. Thank you.
Especially, I now work for East Baton Rouge Public Schools in the Technology Department. And the fact that technology increases all the time, you can't just put it in and walk away. It has to be maintained. I don't think the caliber of this facility, it's impressive for us to have, should be defunded. We need to make plans, and I may not have understood about how you reroute budget line items. If you had a need, you might take from Peter to pay Paul. I might need that explained to me. But I really do disagree with the way this has been presented and with the essential items, the technology, the access to literature for people who cannot read. I think if you did some statistic finding in our parish, you would find that's a real significant problem. So I would like to register my disagreement with this budget. I think you should reevaluate, and I think you should look at more at who you're serving, your constituents, the people that need the services of this library. Libraries have had to evolve, and I think Livingston Parish Library has evolved. I just don't want to see it digress. Thank you.
President and opposition would like to speak, Jordan Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, y'all. Jordan Gonzalez, Denham Springs. So I just want to start off by saying just a quick thing. We said earlier that the library is not as important as firefighters and all of that. Totally disagree. When you're talking about raising the bottom line of our parish, raising literary rates, you know, raising poverty, the library is essential for that. So, but other than that, honestly, as a resident, as a community member, I'm really confused on all the line items in the specific budget. The original budget, Michelle had given out, pulled that through public, I had to see it through public records requests. So I had a couple of questions on where these numbers kind of came from for marketing and for these services. Yeah, I mean, how did y'all come to these numbers to gut these? Because if there's a surplus of, you know, over $300,000, it seems to me we could fund these programs, these extra programs you have, like, say, an extra $7,000 in kid program. We could fund that with the surplus that we have. So just, if y'all could give me an idea of where these numbers kind of came from, at least maybe for programming? Like, how'd you came up with, why get rid of adult program, adult literacy program? What's the goal in there? Do y'all don't mind? Okay. What about professional development? How'd you come up with that one? Did you run the numbers to make sure that hiring a professional would be less expensive than contracting out on a needs-based basis? Because hiring a professional comes with higher, you know, a professional salary. So that's upwards of $60,000, definitely more than minimum wage. So was that cheaper? No? Was the whole board showing the budget and everything before this meeting? Got you. Was there a public meeting beforehand to go over this current amendment budget?
Do y'all agree not to speak? Is that what this is? Or are you just kind of upset?
No, I presented on that the professional development is, was not to hire somebody for 60,000. It was to empower the staff who have the master's degrees to conduct the training like principals and teachers do.
That's fair. Did you, did you run the numbers to make sure that there increase in pay for that without offset hiring out and contracting out for specific situations? Things like, like the legal service, right? We do pre-legal services around a couple of times a year. I don't know if it's once a year or a couple of times. But like, would we hire our own? You know? No? All right. Well?
Well, I'm like this, you can't know everything, so who's going to train?
Right. Well, and the professional development is for our professional staff of librarians. We have to have a certain hour, number of hours of training ourselves, and those are usually for us to go to conferences that are, are library-specific.
Okay.
So yeah, so twice a year, we do have staff training. And yes, sometime, the one we just had in December, we did all of that training ourselves. Misty did a security training for us, those kind of things. But also, once in the spring, we like to bring in someone that will do something like conflict resolution with patrons and, you know, just different because things change, everything changes and, you know.
Yeah, so it's hard to kind of have, and I think part of it made sense, the hiring an in-person maintenance guy. Got you. Well, that's it. I will say, just leave it on this, a five-page PowerPoint was kind of hard to get to the details. That was my only deal. It would've been nice to like, to have that, right, a full budget out for the public, but, all right, thank you for your time.
In opposition would like to speak, Amanda Jones.
He's coming right back. Do I wait for him? I guess not, I heard the buzzer. All right. My name is Amanda Jones, District Two, Watson. I'd like to touch on e-Ressources. This year, library patrons set a record for e-video
Reevaluate, especially, I now work for East Baton Rouge Public Schools in the Technology Department. And the fact that technology increases all the time. You can't just put it in and walk away. It has to be maintenance. I don't think the caliber of this facility, it's impressive for us to have, should be defunded. We need to make plans and I may not have understood about how you reroute budget line items. If you had a need, you might take from Peter to pay Paul. I might need that explained to me. But I really do disagree with the way this has been presented and with the essential items, the technology, the access to literature for people who cannot read. I think if you did some statistic finding in our parish, you would find that's a real significant problem. So I would like to register my disagreement with this budget. I think you should reevaluate and I think you should look at more at who you're serving, your constituents, the people that need the services of these libraries. Libraries have had to evolve and I think Livingston Parish Library has evolved. I just don't want to see it digress. Thank you.
In opposition would like to speak Jordan Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, y'all. Jordan Gonzalez, Denham Springs. So I just want to start off by saying just a quick thing. We said earlier that the library is not as important as firefighters and all of that. Totally disagree. When you're talking about raising the bottom line of our parish, raising literary rates, you know, raising poverty, the library is essential for that. So, but other than that, honestly, as a resident, as a community member, I'm really confused on all the line items in the specific budget. The original budget, Michelle had given out, pulled that through, I had to see it through public records requests. So I had a couple of questions on where these numbers kind of came from for marketing and for these services. Yeah, I mean, how did y'all come to these numbers to gut these? Because if there's a surplus of, you know, over $300,000, it seems to me we could fund these programs, these extra programs you have, like say, an extra $7,000 in kid programming. We could fund that with the surplus that we have. So just if y'all could give me an idea of where these numbers kind of came from? At least maybe for programming? Like how'd you came up with, why get rid of adult programming? Adult literacy program? What's the goal in there? What about professional development? How'd you come up with that one? Did you run the numbers to make sure that hiring a professional would be less expensive than contracting out on a needs-based basis? Because hiring a professional comes with higher, you know, a professional salary. So that's upwards of $60,000, definitely more than minimum wage. So was that cheaper? Was the whole board showing the budget and everything before this meeting? Got you. Was there a public meeting beforehand to go over this current amendment budget?
Have you all agreed not to speak? Is that what this is or are you just kind of upset?
No, I presented on that the professional development is, was not to hire somebody for 60,000. It was to empower the staff who have the master's degrees to conduct the training like principals and teachers do.
That's fair. Did you run the numbers to make sure that they're increasing pay for that without offset hiring out and contracting out for specific situations? Things like the legal service, right? We do pre-legal services around a couple of times a year. I don't know if it's once a year or a couple of times. But like would we hire our own? No? All right, well.
Well, I'm like this. You can't know everything, so who's going to train?
Right, well, and the professional development is for our professional staff of librarians. We have to have a certain hour, number of hours of training ourselves. And those are usually for us to go to conferences that are library-specific.
Okay, so you were.
So yeah, so twice a year, we do have staff training. And yes, sometime, the one we just had in December, we did all of that training ourselves. Misty did a security training for us, those kind of things. But also, once in the spring, we like to bring in someone that will do something like conflict resolution with patrons and, you know, just different because things change. Everything changes and.
Yeah, so it's hard to kind of have, and I think part of it made sense, the hiring an in-person maintenance guy. Got you. Well, that's it. I will say, just leave it on this, a five-page PowerPoint was kind of hard to get to the details. That was my only deal. It would've been nice to like to have that, right? A full budget out for the public, but all right. Thank you for your time.
In opposition would like to speak Amanda Jones.
He's coming right back.
He's coming back. Do I wait for him? I guess not, I heard the buzzer. All right, my name is Amanda Jones, District 2, Watson. I'd like to touch on eresources. This year, library patrons set a record for e-video checkouts with 10,000 videos checked out so far in 2024, yet we're moving that number down to zero. Times are tough right now. One of the first things people have to give up at home is entertainment. They can rely on these resources from the local library to do so. In addition, many of our seniors and disabled patrons rely on e-music. In a survey by the Institute for Healthcare Policy, 98% of older adults reported health-related benefits of music. Music has always played a central role in human culture, particularly in Louisiana. Research shows that playing music in patients with dementia can significantly improve their lives, yet we are cutting that out. The proposed budget cut for e-audiobooks is 43%. Patrons have borrowed 82,310 audiobooks between January and November of this year, which surpassed the 2023 total of 71,000. As a certified reading specialist, trained on accommodating students with language processing disorders, I know the value of e-audiobooks and their power to build and enhance vital literacy skills such as fluency vocabulary, language acquisition, pronunciation, phonemic awareness and comprehension. The Journal of Neuroscience published a study that showed audiobooks stimulated the same cognitive and emotional areas as print books, yet we want those to go away. Not to mention, this is a resource for our visually impaired community members, our English language learners, and we should be investing in audiobooks instead of cutting them. The budget for another popular item, ebooks, will be significantly reduced. Ebooks offer several benefits, including portability, environmental sustainability, instant access, interactive elements like embedded video, embedded videos, and the ability to carry a large library on a single device. The search functionality with the text helps students and the accessibility features like adjustable font help community members with visual impairments. Many of our senior and disabled patrons, as well as those who do not live near a branch, rely on digital content to utilize library resources. We have so many patrons in rural areas with no transportation, but they can access ebooks online. According to library usage statistics, ebook circulation has increased 127% in the last four years. Why in the world would we cut the budget for that and not invest instead? It seems very short-sighted. Libraries are more than just physical books. I'm disheartened that some don't seem to understand that and want to eliminate these valuable resources. The Millage pass to fully fund the library, to unnecessarily cut money, instead goes against the will of the people. I would also like to say, I trust our director who has a degree in both business and library science and the experience to make these decisions.
In opposition would like to speak Lane Johnson.
Okay. I'm Lane Johnson and I represent, I'm from District 3 and from Denham Springs. I do not have anything prepared, like all of these other eloquent people. I am here because of my granddaughter. She represents some of our fine students from Denham Springs High School. And she found out that y'all are trying to cut budgets, especially from, I am so nervous, Comic-Con. Because they enjoy things like this. This gives them something to do, a community where they can meet and be with like-minded people. And y'all are fixing to do away with it. Because if you cut the budget 50%, that's essentially what you're doing. And I'm just letting you know, you are, she is 16. Well, 15. But in six months, in six months, she'll be 16. So two and a half years from now, she will be voting for her parish council members. And I bet she will remember how all of this is playing out. And I'm hoping she will let her friends know, which I know she's done a few of them, of what they need to do to help y'all change your mind about cutting this budget. Also, I see digital literacy being eliminated. Now, I'm a librarian. Every day, I see older folks, and when I say older folks, I'm talking about 40 and over. Okay? They don't even know how to do a mouse, much less get on a computer. You eliminate digital libraries or digital education or digital literacy, you're taking away their ability to communicate with their family on the internet, with learning on the internet. You're just eliminating it completely and entirely. And there are a lot of them that this is going to affect. This budget, these budget cuts are just ridiculous. I mean, 83% on summer reading? You want to take that away from the kids? What's wrong? I'm beginning to wonder what have, why? What have y'all against the library? Against summer reading and teaching children to read? I don't understand this. I better go sit down before I get in trouble. Thank you.
In opposition would like to speak Megan Mayer.
Hello, I'm Megan Mayer, District 3. Can you reference slide number two, please? Go to three. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, go back. So you have on the third bullet point, I mean, this was a magnificent PowerPoint with four slides to go over a budget. So you have on bullet point number three, supplying and increasing literature resources to the wider community. Could you define what the wider community is? We don't know what the wider community is, but we have it on a slide. Because I have a feeling that summer reading, which is going to be cut to a $500 budget, would be a priority that you have listed for literature resources to the wider community. I also feel that the ebooks, the audiobooks, the e-video, the e-music, the e-magazines, the software would also fall under increasing literature resources to the wider community. Do we have a response to that? Can we reference slide number three, please? So we have on here, allocate funds from the line items that are either redundant or not necessary. You did call out redundancies, however, you never pointed out what not necessary meant. Who decides what's not necessary?
I can answer. What's not necessary is whenever we have iPads that were donated to us and they've been sitting in a bin for two years and we have $3,500 being allocated to that and they're not being used at all.
So the tablets are for the iPads. That was for the LeapPads that are in the children's section. That's not for the iPads.
Would you said that you had out?
We do have iPads that were done through a grant, but the actual tablets on there are the actual tablets that they use for.
You did not tell us that in a meeting.
Or they're called? Playaways, playaways and launchpads. Those are also in there. So I mean, it's, you know, I.
That was certain information that was not.
Well, but Abby, I also needed, I asked too, before that meeting, for y'all to let me know exactly what y'all wanted to talk about. So I'm sitting at a table having to remember and say, yes, all of these things are in there. That's difficult. And, you know, I'm trying just as hard as y'all are to make sure that I give all the information. And, you know, then it dawned on me afterwards, like, oh, tablets. Okay, yeah, that also includes this. And it's a lot of other things. When we're sitting, I asked for those line items y'all wanted to talk about in advance so that I can make sure I had everything and I didn't get anything from y'all until y'all came in and we sat at the big table in the conference room, my computer with all of the budget information is in my office and we're trying to remember all of these things. And it was still a three-hour meeting.
We've asked for information to be given to us and we have not been given that information. We've been informed that certain contracts.
Please hold it down.
We've been told that some contracts have been cut, but the money's still allocated in the budget for it. So we have not got that information. All of these things can be amended and will be amended. But until we get that, all that information to us.
What other, what other information did you need, Abby? What did you just say that I didn't give you? I'm trying to make sure I get everything that y'all need.
No, let's get it out. That's what we're here for. That's what we're here for. Let's talk about it.
We're being, we're being, we're being open about this. There's been information that we. We don't need to hear.
Let her finish her comment, so then I can address some of the.
What I'm saying is that there's been contracts that have, are no longer in place. We have been told that there have been contracts that are fixing to go out because the last person that was the director was over them. So we have not gotten that information. We're still waiting on information. And so whenever we say that things can be amended, yeah, there are money, there's money that can be put back in there and will be put back in there. But it needs to, we need to have all that information to know that each part is being, and we're not just putting money into an account just to have money to show that we don't have a surplus.
So is that redundant or not necessary?
I didn't say it was done, I didn't say it was redundant. Some things.
I'm going to respond when the patron or the citizen gets done.
But that's, that's what it is. Whenever we've asked for stuff and whenever, just like Libby is supposed to be cut out. Well, if Libby is, we should inform her that Libby's supposed to be cut out. Well, how does that reflect in our budget? We didn't go, and we didn't know about that until we went and we started asking questions that Libby's supposed to be cut out, just like we didn't know that Canopy was cut out. Well, how should that reflect in our budget? It was not reflected in our budget. So that's why we were saying, we need to go over there. We need more information. We need to see line items instead of just like what y'all are seeing. This is what we get. So whenever we ask questions, now we're saying, okay, we want to see where this is going. We want to see how many people that you do have working. How many people do we have for insurance, but we don't have positions for them? We just learned that our insurance went up 37% in two years. So that's information that we are getting at the same time that y'all are getting in the meetings. So we have to make a sound decision right there. Whenever I've asked for professional services and we go in and we find out that that is being done, let's see. Professional services. I had it marked up. I'm sorry for taking so much time. Accounting goes into that. Audit, consulting, HR, legal, security. But yet we have another line item for legal.
So how long have you had that, that breakdown of budget?
The first, the first one, we had it nine business days and she went out of town for a couple of days. So we weren't, then I sent Mr. Dustin an email and he said that he could not get us most of the information because it was under lock and key in her office. So we did try to get some information. So we're not trying to cut out everything. Everything is amendable. If there's somebody, if there's a contract that's not negotiable anymore or it's cut out, like such as Libby, we can take that for Libby and reallocate that because we don't know how much was spent on that. We can take that and reallocate that and put that back into ebooks. Just like the summer reading program that was slashed by 83%. In 2023, there was no money in there at all allocated for summer reading program.
Because Friends funded that beforehand.
Okay, but it wasn't on this budget. So whenever we came back and we did this, it wasn't, it was $500 allocated to it. They only spent 200 or 200 something dollars of it. Then they come back and ask for 2,000 or whatever, 3,000 dollars, sorry, 3,000 dollars. Whenever you've only spent 200 dollars, then why are you coming back and asking for 3,000 dollars of it?
Because.
But they're not even using it, man. I mean, it's not even.
So, but anyway, that's what I'm saying. Everything on this budget can be reallocated. It can be amended. It is a matter of seeing what, what we're actually spending and what we're actually paying at the end of year. We need hard copies instead of just this, which y'all are getting.
So if you were to approve the budget tonight, you can go back and re-amend the entire budget?
You can go.
That is what was originally said. When you have a budget, you can amend it up or down. The line items that you see, this was only, as I said in the presentation, this was a budget that we touched. We had nine days to look at the original budget. We sat down with staff. We went through each and every line item, asked for a justification on each and every line item. They couldn't provide us one. Majority of the services that we're paying for, this library does not provide. They are contracting out.
That is not true, Larry. That is not true.
They are contracting.
We have to contract e-services because we can't make it.
Michelle, point of order, point of order. They are, they are, listen, they are contracting out majority of the services, which is not the duty of a tax-paid system. Our job is not to go out and hire people to come in and do stuff. You can't do that with taxpayer money in a library system. That's the same thing with providing free movies.
It's funny you bring up what you can and can't do with taxpayer money.
Point of order.
Can you go to slide number five?
Everybody, listen. It's my prerogative to close the discussion. Okay? This gets out of hand, I'm gonna close it. All right? We don't need to do that. Let everyone talk, say their piece. You have an objection, you know, say it, whatever. We've taken up some of our time, so I'm gonna give her some more.
So can we go to slide number, I believe it was five? We're talking about taxpayer money. Right here. So if we end with a budget surplus, which is what you're saying is $300,000 is, what do you intend to do with the money that has been taxpayer-approved for the library?
It's not what we want to do with the money. If the administration justifies the spending of money and where they need it to go, we will do that. When we had this meeting with administration and we asked them, as you're asking us, where does this $50,000 increase goes to Comic-Con? Where's the justification in that? The answer was, we don't know. We guesstimate. They didn't provide us with statistics. It's actually quite ironic that the library provided a lot of statistics five days leading up to this presentation, but we were provided none. So we don't come up with this. This is what we're doing and we will amend the budget up or down as every legislative body does in the United States of America. And if it is justified, we will, we will increase or decrease that budget.
So what is the board's strategic goals for the money that would be in surplus as savings presented?
Strategic goal and surplus.
What are you trying to do?
This is not, this is not a surplus. This is just what naturally happened with the cutting of expenses.
What is going to be, what do you, what are your goals for the library if you've got extra funds available?
We're not there yet. This is December. We're not there yet.
There's also, there's also a lot of maintenance work that needs to be done. There's a lot of foundation issues, a lot of different things, projects that are going on that need to be looked at, that people haven't been given all the information. I mean, we just learned, how many days ago, last week, that the South Branch was supposed to have a walking trail and a pond and everything else like that. Probably won't go through. While nobody else has been told that, we've been told that. And I was like, okay. But it's been pushed on the back burner, but it was on our strategic planning. This is the information.
Oh, so you do have strategic planning?
That was on the strategic, the strategic, no, that was on the strategic plan that was presented to us. Why present us a strategic plan of having that whenever you're not going to go through it to begin with? That's what I'm saying. Some of the information is not provided. Once we get that information, then we can come back and you can come back and ask the questions and we can have the answers for you that we have, that we have been given, since we have not been given some of the information.
I would strongly suggest, and this is just an opinion from a taxpayer who voted to support the library, that you do plan because you can't have budgets without planning. You can't, you can't say, I don't plan for things. Like that just blows my mind how you're in charge of something and you don't strategically plan. Because if I go to my place of business where I work and tell them I don't have a plan for my budget, that's a pretty big problem. Probably going to get like a red mark on my yearly review. So when you say you don't have a strategic plan, I may would go check out some books from the library about strategic planning and learn about it. That's ridiculous.
So let me, let me ask a question. So just so it's on the record, if we can amend the budget up or down at any point, why don't we just approve the budget from November 19?
Because we just amended it.
Yeah, well, we can just vote on passing the original one. I mean, we can amend it as well.
Yeah, well, we can just vote on passing the original one. I mean, we can amend it as we want.
It has been.
It's not on the agenda.
It was on the previous agenda.
But it's not on this one. We have to go by what's on the agenda.
Mandy Jo Pickering, Watson. In November twenty twenty-three, the library millage was passed by the taxpayers of this parish at a rate of ten mills. In August of this year, the millage was voluntarily rolled back to help ease the burden on taxpayers. However, the fact remains that the residents of this parish voted in a higher millage. The library administration proposed a budget for twenty twenty-five based on that reduced millage. The budget showed increases for staff salaries and increases for services and programs. Several members of this board voted against that budget. They instead have proposed a budget that increases unspent revenue. However, it comes at the cost of other library services. This is bad government. The people of this parish voted to fund the library and a governing board attempting to circumvent the results of an election makes a mockery of our democratic process. Governing authorities are supposed to enact resident wishes and the residents of Livingston Parish spoke at the polls. I would also argue that this is fiscal. Well, I'll skip that part because you gave an amended amount. When such an excess comes at the cost of library services, it is not doing anyone a favor. If money is unspent, it does not go back to the taxpayers. It will have to sit in the bank unused, wasted, while residents remain unable to attend and utilize events and services they love from the library. In times of hardship, residents will cut their personal budget for entertainment. What better place to turn than to their public library for alternate forms of entertainment? Families can check out board games or movies for family game night or family movie night. This is exactly what my family does. According to my tax assessment for this year, I paid a hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-eight cents for the library at a millage of seven point five three. My two elementary-aged children and myself have consumed, according to my most recent library receipts, ten thousand twenty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents worth of content by using the library this year alone. If you factor that in for since we've had a library card when we moved here in two thousand nineteen, it is very nearly thirty-five thousand dollars. My family could not afford to spend more than ten thousand dollars on books, on video games, on board games, on movies, on museums, and more on our own, but for less than two hundred dollars, we have been able to do every single one of those things through the library. This year, the library already saves taxpayer money. Be fiscally responsible with our taxpayer money and continue to support the amazing things that the library offers. Don't try to circumvent taxpayer wishers wishes by cutting the funding that was voted in by popular vote. And also, my kids consistently check out the leap pad leap pads and playaways that are offered through the digital collection at the library.
In opposition, do not wish to speak Vicki Summer. In opposition, do not wish to speak Caitlin Roberts. In opposition, would like to speak Mr. Rita.
Hello. I just retired from here. I worked here almost twenty-one years. Loved it. They used to have to kick me out the door every night and I love coming here every day. I love this library. I'm getting ready to move to Lake Charles, Calhoun Parish next year sometime. Don't know when. But I still love libraries. I love this library and I love every library I've gone to in this entire United States. This library doesn't just have books and things. Recently, I started attending Alzheimer's group meetings. My husband died of dementia, so that hits me hard, you know? I go along with things like that. They have other groups that meet and do things in this library. Not only that, if you're not aware of it, this is an election place. And when Trump ran for office the first time, they had people all around this whole building that were coming to vote at this library. You cut this library, guess what? You cut that. You're gonna affect thousands of people. This library is the backbone of this community. You have people that can't read, that can't use a computer, can't do a lot of things that come here. They come here to do their faxes for their food stamps and things like that. They. I have homeless people that come here for a place to use the library for personal things for their self. Yes, homeless people come here. You know, you have a lot of things that come here. I used to teach computer classes here. They love coming here, learning computers. I had people that got jobs from what I taught them. Yeah, that means a lot. That boosts the economy. When you boost the economy of a parish, you affect a lot of people. Well, if you cut that, recently I've gone to East Baton Rouge to some of their services and some of their things. They have fifty to a hundred people show up at their programs. If you cut marketing and advertising for a business, guess what? You cut their services. Think about that. East Baton Rouge, they have all kinds of advertising, including on TV. We need more advertising of what's here in this parish, in this library, to promote this library, to make it even greater. If you cut that, guess what? You cut the library because people won't know about it. They won't know about things. There are so many wonderful things, sewing classes, crafting classes, all kinds of things, children's programs, all sorts of things that mothers that bring lunches for children that don't have a place to eat, don't have food at their house, they've come here in the hallway and giving that to people. So just think about that when you're talking about cutting things. Because this library is the backbone of this community. If you cut out that, you cut out part of the backbone.
In opposition, do not wish to speak Laxine Biddle. In opposition, in opposition, would like to speak Lori Calle.
Lori Calle, Denham Springs, Louisiana. I'm a retired teacher, so libraries are my thing. As a matter of fact, I was an English teacher, journalism teacher, taught denim, taught at Front Settlement, taught all over the place here. One of the things I'd like to ask right now, and I know you don't answer so much, but when was this budget, the amended budget, published? But when was it? I know when Michelle's budget, I saw that budget. I looked at that budget. I went over that budget. But when did this budget get published so that as a taxpayer I could see it? Was it published previous to this meeting?
That would be up to Michelle if it's published.
She's the secretary.
We can't. I mean, the budget had never been presented.
Okay, thank you. That's what. So we we didn't get this budget until tonight so that we could actually see it. Okay. Unless we do a public records request.
How did the first budget? We got the first budget. Because I have to publish that budget. We have to. We do a budget hearing beforehand and it's provided to the people and in that notice, it says that it is provided a week before. And so anybody can come to the library or to the administration office and get a copy if they wanted. But that this amended budget is not done that way because that was not part of the public hearing.
So this is the first time. I mean, it was the first time I saw it, so I was just curious. And as I went through it and I saw it, one of the things that I noticed that you said that you were gonna concentrate more on literacy and the core mandate. But one of the things that we know is that we live in a world that's different from whenever I was growing up. All I had was a library. I mean, I went to the first library we had and it was a little white building by Denham Springs Elementary. And you had a children's section that was about this big, but and I read them all. But this is not where we're at. I love it. You walk in here and you see the kids on VR. Why? That's the future, virtual reality, by the way. And it's amazing, but that's where we're going. And the the library is a huge thing. It's not just what we think it is. It's not just books anymore because the kid, we're we're getting adults for our children. We're preparing them for the future. One of the things I saw when you were talking about Comic-Con being cut, you know, we we talk about our kids. It's like, we gotta take care of the children. By God, we better. I got a new grandbaby on the way. And I want my grandson and my granddaughter to experience that thing. But you know what? I like them to be in the library. I don't wanna cut things so my kids are on the, my grandkids are on the street. I want them here where they're supervised and they're experiencing that. And the other thing I'm gonna say is you have a budget so that you can follow it. You're saying, well, we can amend it up and down. We can amend it up and down. But I'm looking at one of the things on here that's dear to my heart and it's adult literacy. That's a line item budget that's zero right now. So you can go up or down, but you better have the stuff ready now. Okay, because I taught adult ed. You get somebody coming in here who can't read. You. I couldn't teach somebody that couldn't read, not with thirty people in a classroom. Here, they do it. I have a friend who was here. She volunteered. She taught someone to read with the materials that this library provided. If there's no library budget for that, there are no library materials when that person walks in the door. And that's what we have to remember. She's the expert. Ask her when you don't know about, but she has to anticipate what will happen. You don't go next to the library and say, well, let's pull it up or let's pull it down. It's too late. That person's gone and we haven't done that. So I was just gonna say. I trust this librarian because she's educated. You know, you said something, oh, we can't have those people coming outside and teaching. We gotta librarian. She has to stay up to date. She has to learn what's happening. Libraries are changing. Have y'all experienced that? Have you gone to other libraries in other states, in other places? They are phenomenal. And this library is fantastic. So to cut it is not gonna be acceptable as a taxpayer. I I voted for this millage. I I love this library system. It's well-run. It's recognized statewide and nationally. And I would ask that if you're gonna do this budget, you give me time to sit down and look at it. You don't tell me on PowerPoint. That's not fair to me. Thank you.
In opposition, will provide information requested. Ms. Steve Dimpsey. In opposition, do not wish to speak Tim Elsie. In opposition, would like to speak Marla Elsie.
Marla Elsie, Denham Springs. Real quick, before I get to my prepared statement, I wanna point out some things that were in the in the slides. You said you wanted to utilize the surplus to increase salaries. That's unnecessary. Michelle's original budget already included a salary increase. You said you wanted to ease the tax burden on the residents. That's impossible. The tax assessor is already taking the money. You cannot give it back to the people or lower it. The tax assessor's already taking that, so you cannot ease the tax burden on the residents. And you said that you wanted to, you would be creating an increase in income of three hundred and six thousand dollars and a hundred and eighty-one dollars. You cannot increase your income. Only Jeff Taylor and the election, the people who run the elections, who vote can. Your income is set, period. Okay, so when I saw this budget, I was shocked. There were many cuts that felt heartless and unnecessary, but the most troubling ones for me were the ones tied to adult literacy. The line items for readers' club, digital literacy, and adult literacy were all slashed to zero. So let's start with the readers' club. It's a year-long program that motivates adults to read through monthly challenges with small prizes like pencils and keychains and socks. Those aren't extravagant. They inspire learning and connection and a love of books, so why would you cut a program that strengthens the community and costs so little? Then digital literacy. Think about somebody trying to learn their first smartphone or apply for a job online or master basic computer skills to become more marketable. These are challenges for people of all ages, especially apparently those of us over forty. And our library understands that literacy today means more than just reading. It's equipping people for the modern world. And finally, adult literacy, the one that seems most critical to me. This program helps people learn to read. It connects them with GED courses or or dyslexia resources. It helps provide support in the area of English as a second language. And somebody said something to me online recently about, oh, well, it's just a bunch of illegal aliens. Have we forgotten that people come here legally, perfectly legally? They fix our houses. They farm our fields. And they pay taxes either through the buying their own property or renting someone else's property. They're paying the fourth property taxes for the library, including my sister-in-law who immigrated here from Thailand. They need help learning the language and it's what the library's for. And adult literacy also helps our own citizens, our neighbors who never had the chance to learn to read well. Maybe they struggle due to disabilities or tough circumstances. Should we just tell them, oh, well, it's too late? The one institution that's devoted to literacy is now going to abandon them? How is that right or compassionate? How is that Christian? Investing in literacy benefits us all. A more literate community is stronger and more productive. The public voted for a ten-mill tax and the library voluntarily reduced it to seven-point-whatever. And now you're saying that the budget based on that number is too much. By the way, let me add that Michelle always gets a good audit. But you wanna cut it some more. The people have spoken in the polls. They're speaking here tonight. They don't want your reduced budget. They want Michelle's budget. So pass it.
In opposition, would like to speak Francine Smith.
So I know you're gonna vote the way that you're gonna vote. I'm not trying to change your vote. I do wanna point something out, though. I have four kids. I should be looking this way. I have four kids. My oldest is twenty-five, my youngest is seventeen, but when they were little, we would go to the library in Baton Rouge. And then after we went to the, because back then there wasn't a library, two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand four, whatever. After we went to the library, to the tri-parish ballet or programs, we'd go shopping and then we would go out to eat. You know, we would spend our money in Baton Rouge because that's where I went to programs at. And the thought that you're gonna cut summer reading programs, you know, there's something called the halo effect, you know? And so all the people, I know I've worked here and anybody else who worked here, you know, summer reading, this place is packed. Like, we're talking several hundred people a day come here and they come here to the programs. And then they probably just go eat somewhere here in Denham Springs or Livingston or whatever programs they're going to and they're spending their money here in the parish. And so when you cut summer reading, you're gonna be pushing people to go to Baton Rouge because people are looking for inexpensive ways to spend time with their kids and entertain them. And that's all I'm gonna say. Just something to think about.
In opposition, do not wish to speak Mary Foyle. In opposition, do not wish to speak Tony McKee. In opposition, would like to speak Wade McAllister.
I'm Wade McAllister, Denham Springs District Six. Y'all said that y'all couldn't vote on Michelle's original budget, right? Because it's not on the agenda.
What was your question?
Y'all said that y'all couldn't vote on Michelle's original budget because it's not on the agenda. But according to Robert's rule of law, if y'all have a majority vote, y'all can add it to the agenda and then vote on it. Someone just has to make a motion to do so?
Yes.
I do oppose the adjusted budget with the cuts that have been discussed. It has not been presented as Michelle's budget has either. So that's all I have.
In opposition, would like to speak Catherine Hyde.
Kathleen Hyde, District Six. I just have a couple of questions. When was the public notice issued for this budget? When was it noticed in the parish journal and when was it published for public inspection?
It was not.
It was not?
It has to be thirty days before a meeting.
Okay, so you might wanna look into RS thirty-nine thirteen oh seven, which governs the public participation section of the Local Governing Bodies Act, which states that no proposed budget shall be considered for adoption until at least one public hearing has been conducted on the proposal. There was no public hearing conducted because there was no notice of public hearing for this budget and this budget was not published.
We actually had one, but that was for the original.
That was for the original budget. So we'll just, we can we can run through the timeline real quick. So there was a meeting.
It didn't happen, the last meeting, they didn't have.
There was a meeting held on November nineteenth. The public hearing was held for Michelle's budget on November nineteenth. That meeting was a tie or the vote was a tie. budget on November nineteenth. That meeting was a tie, or the vote was a tie on the budget. So the meeting was recessed until December fourth. The agenda for the December fourth meeting did have public hearing entitled, but that meeting lost quorum. So no public hearing on that budget was held. So it seems a new budget was devised between a November nineteenth and a December fourth meeting. This was my question for Mr. Moody or Mr. Cascio. Unfortunately, they're not here. I believe that that amended budget is also subject to the publication and public hearing requirements in RS 391307. So I would really, you know, strongly advise that you maybe ask your legal counsel about that. If you're not sure of that, was there any consideration to publish notification in the parish journal? For this journal?
It was the same one as the one where Ms. Catherine left. So it was already published.
So this, you're saying this budget, this amended budget, has been published. What was the date?
No, it hasn't, because y'all wanted to present that budget at the last meeting. That this budget hasn't been published.
So if you are secretary, why didn't we follow the guidelines?
Because I don't, this isn't my budget. We published, we did a public hearing for our, for the original budget. Then the next one, the next meeting that we had was supposed to be the recess of that meeting.
Correct.
So that was for that budget, still that original budget, and then you were gonna present whatever amended you were gonna have.
Correct.
This is not the original budget. I, you know, I, you would have gone out thirty days in advance to put this in a notice. And I don't, I don't know that that is even possible, since we've already had a hearing on it. These are all things that are new. This is, Abby, this has never been done before. So.
We know.
Sounds like y'all don't have a legal budget to vote on tonight.
We had this, and then Mr. Ronnie, Miss.
There was no public hearing held for this amended budget.
Everybody, hold it down, please.
There was no notice published in the parish journal as required by law. There was no public hearing as required by law. You can't vote on this budget. You cannot adopt this budget. You cannot certify it. If you do adopt it, you cannot certify it.
Our legal representation said that we have to adopt a budget.
A budget. The budget that meets the legal requirements.
No, ma'am, it's not what you want. It's a budget.
It's not what you want either, Larry.
We have to, we have to adopt a budget, ma'am.
Yes, you have to adopt a budget. You have to adopt a budget that has met the legal requirements of RS 391307, which requires publication, open for inspection, and a public hearing. This budget has not met those requirements. You cannot pass this budget legally. Unfortunately, we don't have a parish attorney here who can confirm that. You need to check with them.
Look, let them, let them do what they want to do, and if there are consequences, there'll be consequences. If there's no consequences, there's no consequences. There are consequences, there'll be consequences.
So the next question that I have is on one of the slides, I believe it said, quote, "to ease the tax burden on residents." So is this money, this three hundred and six thousand dollars, it's gonna be a little bit extra, is that being returned to residents via refund, or is that being reallocated to any of the public services that you claim, you know, are the only necessary services in the community? What's that mechanism? How are we easing the tax burden?
Obviously, it's overtime, Mrs. Hyde. It's the three hundred and six thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars is not a refund.
So how are you easing the tax burden on the residents?
Over time. And this.
How are you easing the tax burden on the residents?
By cutting the budget and reallocating funds to make sure that we're funding. We've pointed out several ways that we reallocated funding to increase. That does not mean.
You mentioned that e-audiobook and e-video and e-music. You mentioned that some of the services that were being zeroed out would be reallocated into different line items, let's see. So I noticed that there is a.
The reason that those line items were so high is, once again, we are contracting out services. We are not buying outright.
So you've cut the line item for ebooks, you've cut the line item for e-audiobooks, you've cut the line items for literacy programs, you have cut collections in general, you've cut programming in general. So where exactly are you fitting in the six zeroed items? Literacy, readers' club, e-video, music, and magazines. Where are those being added?
Once again, we are not, we are proposing that we buy items outright, and we are not contracting or renting resources. That is a wiser way to spend money, to allow librarians to actually do their job the way it needs to be done, to search out better contracts that are not a hundred and forty thousand for ebooks.
So what line item is that under?
And the question that I proposed to Michelle was, what are we doing? Are we Blockbuster? Or are we Netflix? Because Blockbuster no longer exists, and it supplied physical movies and DVDs to people. Netflix replaced it as a streaming service. So you can't have your cake and eat it too.
That's not germane to the discussion. So what line item, what line item are those items being added into this budget?
I digress.
It's your budget. You should be able to answer questions about it.
I think we have time.
Thanks.
So, so if I make a motion to add the original budget to the agenda, and somebody seconds it, we could put it on the agenda and vote on it? It takes, Lord, it takes.
Ricky Goff, three two seven seven four, Coverwood Drive, Councilman, I'm sorry. Oh, that's not a problem. Council, District Seven. Start with, I'm not in favor of cutting the budget. We reduced the millage. We went through a lot of push-pull, and a lot of people in this audience knows that I was a very strong component about reducing the millage to the library, because I felt that the library, I didn't feel I'm a hundred percent behind that the library was collecting too much money at that time than what they needed. So they did exactly that, and they live by what the budget, by what revenue that they're coming in. Not too many entities in this parish went to zero increase in their millage. So that's a good thing. The budget, there's a lot of discussion. Again, I'm not a library, I'm not a lawyer, but a budget is introduced, and as far as I know, it's legally introduced. It's not your budget. It's not your budget. It is the library's budget. So it's one budget. It was introduced. So there's an amendment to that budget. So your question is, is that budget, in my world, is actually on the agenda right now? The 2025 budget is on the agenda. So what you have to do is, you have to vote to accept that budget with amendments, or accept it as it's presented. I think we're perfectly legal in everything. A lot of the discussion and all that's going on, too, about what Ms. Michelle's responsibility is and isn't, has to do with after that budget is adopted. But at this point, the board has a lot of the control on accepting the budget. Again, it's not this budget or this budget. It's the library's budget. And it's approved as it's presented, or it's approved with amendments. And you have to identify those amendments. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that before we went too far in one way or the other. I employ this board to try to get moving. I'm loving to see the books on the, on the thing that we're going to address. We are making headway. But we got to figure out this budget. And I hadn't talked to him. This is my board member appointment. But I believe he said it as well, just as, just as well, is you can approve it as it is, and you can raise it up or raise it down. Let these people have all the input that they want. And then you can put it back on the, and amend it in the first quarter. Whatever y'all feel that y'all need to do. But I think it's a solid budget. Do I believe that there's a little tweaking in there? Absolutely, I do. Do I have any intentions on coming back to this board next year for the millage? You doing right, I do. You doing right, I do. I know that budget probably better than just about anybody in here, because I started five years back, and then I went seven more years to get to the fact that I knew I could stand up here and say, we need to reduce the millage. We're collecting too much money, and the people of this parish need to be able to pay their utility bills. So.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
In opposition, would like to speak, Jessica Legath.
Hi, guys. I'm Jessica Legath. I'm out of town of Livingston. I'll say, I have three points. One, as an HR professional, there are certain development, I mean, certain professional development that has to be done. And you cannot expect your librarians to do at all. If I was, in my world, if I was just to give all the training to my company, it'd be pretty poor. I'm just gonna be honest. And not because I'm poor, because I'm limited in my knowledge. And things are ever-changing, and you cannot expect Livingston Parish to know everything that's going on in the country. So they need to bring in, you need those diverse perspectives. So I will say that. There are certifications they have to keep as an HR professional. There are certifications I have to keep. There's training that I have to be done that I can't give to myself. So is there probably wiggle room? Yes, but that's point one. Point two, I've looked at these cuts, and I honestly am shaking my head. I don't understand it. As you say, you want to increase, and you want all these people to come. And when you look at all the people, we've set records on three events, the highest attendance to come. So if you keep seeing increased attendance, it just makes sense that, guess what, next year, you're gonna have even more attendance. And so obviously, it's gonna cost more money to put on these events. Is there wiggle room? Probably so. But as I look at, I mean, your ebooks going down, I mean, look at how many books people checked out. You're constantly increasing this. It, the logic doesn't make sense to me. I don't get it. And y'all, y'all don't really seem to want to provide your logic. So that's my two cents on that. And the last thing I would say is, just in watching this, I've watched the last couple of meetings online. This is the first one I've been to. Just in looking at some of y'all, it looks like you clearly, A, hate your job, B, you don't want to be here, and three, you really don't care what the people say. Looking at all the red cards, you represent us. You don't vote for you. You don't vote for what your mom thinks, your dad thinks. You don't vote for you think specifically. You represent everybody in this room. And I think everybody in this room has said they're not in favor of this. So you're not representing your people. I mean, you can tell by the red cards. So I would say, one, listen to your people. Two, fix your face, because some people look like you really are miserable and don't want to be here. And then the last thing, you keep saying you can amend the budget up or down either way. So if you can do that, and you have that power, and the people have spoken, and they want the original budget without all these cuts, approve it. And guess what? You can still amend it up and down either way, because you have that authority. That's all I have to add.
In opposition, you now wish to speak, Nikki Thornton. In opposition, you now wish to speak, Brian Westmoreland. In opposition, would like to speak, Barbara Walker.
Hello. I don't know all of you. I do know some of you. I am a lifelong educator here in, I started teaching in Texas, was the teacher of the year for Texas when I was there. I was the first runner-up for teacher of the year here in Louisiana when I came back home. I have credentials for that. I still do continuing education. I still go to classes. I have a master's plus thirty, because when I finished school, I didn't think I was through. I will never stop learning. And for you to have a line item that you say out loud, Larry, that librarians don't need to continue their education, I don't even, that just blows my head wide open. I don't understand that. The library is a place for education. And it is, I know that you're not a teacher, but a librarian is an educator. And they must have continuing education for their librarians. If you do not move forward, you die. That is just all there is to that. Line items, I don't understand. You say there's line items. This went to zero because it was allocated somewhere else. But I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not a math person, and I am not a numbers person. And I don't understand this budget very well. But where it has this final column where it says, "proposed 2025," is that the amended proposition, or is that the original twenty-five?
The first two pages are original?
So the original one is.
Okay. I, I was wondering, you know, it says the line items. How do we know, when you say you're moving line items, how do we know? Is it all on these papers? When I go back and look, I can find where, if this went to zero, but it added this much to that line item? How do I know if you gave a hundred percent of it to a new place, or ten percent of it to a new place? How do I know that?
Barbara, that is something that we can amend, and we can get that to you, because that's the same thing that we asked for, too.
Okay.
In the.
All right. So the answer is, I can't tell from here. All right.
Neither could you tell in the original.
The third, the third thing is, if I had a budget in my home, that I budgeted for my world, and I know how much I have every month to spend, and then my neighbor could change my budget every, every month, I wouldn't know whether I'm gonna have the money that I budgeted or not, because you, the board, has the power to amend the budget. Does that mean that this month I have enough for electricity, but next month I might not? I don't know that. If it can be amended willy-nilly. That's my thing. Thank you very much.
In support, and would like to speak, Amanda Robert. That's the last one for this night.
All I wanted to say is that the three hundred and six surplus that we have may come in handy, as the library is currently vulnerable to lawsuits, since it has been recorded numerous times. There is sexually explicit material in the minor sections of the library.
All right, we got one more.
One more.
In support, would like to speak, Trigott.
I'm just gonna be real quick. I'm not gonna get into the cutting of what y'all've done. But I just want to say, the tax assessor don't set the taxes, and he don't collect them. Y'all set the taxes, the sheriff collects them. Y'all in charge of the people's money. I believe that we live in a Republican parish. I believe people are tired of dealing with taxes and money. And I think that less government is always better. Handouts, we live, we live in a capital nation. We ought to believe in capitalism, not government handouts. And so I appreciate y'all's efforts to try to be wise with the people's money. I also say that if this is bad government, and every government entity in Livingston is doing bad government with budgeting right now. You know, Mr. Goff's sitting over there, he, they had a public hearing at the council meeting last Thursday, and an amended budget gets presented for public hearing two hours before. So we all, we all in bad shape, okay, if this is bad government. But, so I just want to say that, encourage you to continue to, to be conservative, be wise with the finances and the resources, support the people. These buildings aren't shutting down tomorrow, you know. These buildings aren't shutting down tomorrow. And, and, you know, a government budget is a living document. It's living constantly. It's moving. It's operating. And so I think that you put something in place that's gonna continue to, to move and to operate, and, and you can come back and make those adjustments as time goes on. And so I believe that you would probably be in safe manner to continue to represent what you have done and everything. So appreciate your work.
One more?
One more. In, in support, would like to speak, Bridget Gilbert.
Hello. Bridget Gilbert. I'm from District Four in Denham Springs. There's a few, okay, Bridget Gilbert, District Four, Denham Springs. There's a few things that have been said tonight about the budget. And I want to ask Michelle something. When you have a surplus, do we throw that money away at the end of the year?
No, it gets moved to Capitol Alley.
Okay, goes on next year. And then what happens?
We use that for improvements. We would use it to buy any bookmobile, whatever.
Till it goes into the next year's budget?
It does.
Mr. Goff, when there's an extra resources out there, does that bring down your millage if you have too much money in the future?
I'm not sure what you're putting.
If you have a surplus, and it goes over to next year.
Correct.
And we, our budget is going to stay about the same with the millage? Would we be able to reduce the millage?
That's why I said that.
Exactly. So that is money back in the people's pocket. Yes, it is. When you reduce a millage.
Mr. Chairman.
Next year, the money comes back, correct? I'm not paying as much taxes if the millage is.
So it doesn't go back to the people's money, pocket?
When the millage reduces. Next year, when I get my tax, is my taxes gonna be less if that millage is reduced?
Have to be careful in the question asked, because the question that you asked is.
If the millage is reduced.
Millage is.
Is my taxes going, no, your millage change every year?
All right, your question.
Does it change?
Let Mr. Goff answer, please.
Does the millage, can the millage change every year?
Yes, I have one you question.
Okay. But if there's a surplus, and it goes to next year, and we're able to accumulate these monies, then what will, when you come Then, uh, what will, when you come in and look at it and say, okay, well, we've got this surplus out there, would you, uh, recommend reducing the millage?
I would. That wasn't your question though. So that's why I came up. You said, would that money go back to the people? And it would not because it's already collected. It would not go back to the people. But let me finish, please. Let me finish, please. Let me finish, please. Okay? Because I've been as comfortable as I can here. So what it does do, just like it did this last time, it gives me a substance to say, you're collecting too much money. Let's reduce it down.
Yes.
Which is what we did. We went from 10 mills down to 7.53.
Yes, we did.
So it's time... It's time to reevaluate next year because they are living off of a lot less money than what they have in the past. So the question becomes is next year, after this budget is all done and lives for a year, just like everybody else with their pub, their, their home property, they evaluate what they can do the following year and they take into consideration the surplus, the money that's left over in the bank?
Right.
And decide if they can live to go down versus their wishes to increase, mobile unit, et cetera, et cetera. So to answer that question, I can't tell you for sure 100% that the millage will be able to go down next year. My gut tells me yes. Because I know the revenue that they're collecting and I know the revenue of this budget, right? I believe that they can live with less. It doesn't have anything to do with the controversy that we're talking about 100 and, $306,000 that's either gonna stay in the budget with this number or we're gonna move it over to capital at the end of the year. It's all about services. That's what it is. It's all about service. Are we gonna cut services?
It's everything about if you decrease, if you decrease your budget and it goes...
It's about cutting services. Because you're cutting line items. Money's still there, money's still collecting. It's either gonna stay in the budget and you can keep providing the services or it's gonna go into capital outlay where you can do more building or whatever. So...
It's not gonna transfer over into next year's budget?
It'll be a surplus. There's $5 million in the bank for this library. Okay? $5 million in the bank for this library. That's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money. Depends on what their goals are. So that's why this year, 100%, cut that millage. Because we desperately need for our people to get money in their pocket.
Right. Exactly.
So the Les Littler auditor said, collect the same dollar amount. He rolled it back to 7.53. Ultimately, that's what we ended up doing. Went from 10 mills and it moved down. Not, not we didn't, this board did. This board moved it down to 7.53. Because they knew that I probably would if not. I'm comfortable with the budget.
You mean the parish council would move it down? Not you personally, the whole parish council?
That's what I said in the opening, that, that was my intentions, is to put it up there for them to vote on.
Yes.
So this board did what they needed to do and moved it down to 7.53. So now they got the budget to live on with the revenue based on 7.53, which was the same thing as the last year's budget. So now we live through this year's budget. And then me, because that's my responsibility, is gonna look at that and I'm gonna decide on my own personally if I believe that they can go down lower or not. And I hope everybody else looks at all these other budgets and do the same thing. If we can and we can use it, then we'll try to move it down more.
Slowly defund the library.
But we gotta get, we, no ma'am.
Nobody is defunding the library.
No ma'am. So the budget is there.
Thank you.
Call a question. Call a question, Mr. Ronnie.
Yeah. I'm gonna call recess for about two minutes. Relax. Hey, Tori, how you doing?
Two more requests to speak and that's gonna be it, okay?
And some more would like, uh, the members to speak in advance in supports, or excuse me, in opposition would like to speak Hunter Pearson.
Name, address, or name, address? Okay. Hunter Pearson, three zero four two zero, LA four forty-one, in Hilton. Uh, first off, I'm not a public speaker, so y'all go easy on me. A lot's been said tonight, so I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but just thinking on the drive over about what to say, and one thing, two, two things came to me. The first one is a question. Is everyone's mind made up coming tonight? Has y'all's decision been made? Or is the public input gonna have any, any impact? Serious question, hon- honestly. You.
Mr. Chair.
Is your mind made up?
We can't speak to this.
Well, you can't speak to the board unless they want to speak.
Okay, are their minds made up? Could you ask them, please, then? Are their minds made up?
They have to answer on their own.
Don't wanna answer that? That's shameful. That was the first question. The second one is, um, try a different approach. Catch more flies with honey. So, I'm in law enforcement, and I don't know if anyone here is familiar with the, the concept of a tactical retreat. Okay, that's what came into my mind on the way here. Basically what it is, if I find myself in a situation that I took a bad step, and I'm in a bad scenario, and I need to get out of there, there's no shame in me backing out, running back to my truck, getting cover, right? I think right now would be a really good time for a tactical retreat. And, uh... I don't think your constituents would see it as y'all not doing your job, doing the best you could. I just think the timing's not right. Maybe you need to revisit this when it's more studied, you've done more research, everybody's communicated better. It's just, everything's been done very poorly to this point, and, um, I think maybe try to humble, humble yourselves and, and consider, um, a tactical retreat, so that's it.
That's all the discussion, okay? Thank you very much for all your input. Now... Let's see. All right. Huh?
You're not supposed to address me, Francine.
No.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it, thank you, yes, yeah.
What?
She's, she's being Francine.
Let's, let's get back to business, whatever. All right. Item of old business is to approve the adjusted fiscal year 2025 operating and capital outlay project budget, presented by Larry. We've discussed it, uh, I think pretty well. What do y'all wanna do now?
Call the questions.
All right, well...
I make the motion to, uh, accept the 2025 budget with amendments.
We got a second?
I second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. You got that, Michelle?
Yes, sir.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Ronnie?
No.
Ms. Tori?
Um, before I say my vote, I do wanna get kind of a, an agreement from everyone. If we can kind of revisit some of these line items and hopefully bring them back and work on some adjustments, work on some things that I know that we've got contracts for that we're zeroing out, but we don't have that information on the contracts, right? I, I, I've noticed some issues, um, that I'd like to readdress. If I can get everybody's agreement that we will in the future readdress those issues that we have.
You talked about amending, they amended.
Well, we, we said several times over that we can adjust things throughout the year next year, correct?
Yes.
And like, right now, we don't have a budget at all, right? Am I correct?
No, we don't have one.
So, we'd be going into 2025 without a budget if we don't put something in place tonight.
Yes.
So, I, I would rather us have something on the books that we can adjust and, and tweak to, to address some of these concerns and some of these issues for the, the public comments that we heard tonight.
So, we could put the original budget...
Well, that's not what the vote is right now.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Look, discussion is over, people.
Look, this is my very first meeting. I'm trying very hard to hear everybody's concerns, to process all of the information that I'm receiving, and try to make a decision to best prepare us going into the next year in a place where we have something to actually work with. As it's presented to me tonight, all I have in front of me is this amended vote currently at this moment. Does that make sense? So, I'm gonna vote in favor, that's my yes vote, with the understanding that we will come back and tweak some of the issues and some of the extra information that we will get with these contracts and things that I'm, I'm not super familiar with, but I don't know the issues. So, I'm, I'm voting yes on, on those points.
Uh, Mr. Larry Davis?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Abby Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Bernard?
So, I'm gonna say if it affects library services or staff, I will always vote no, so I'm voting no. I will say that every time.
Summer?
Summer?
It's passed. Um, Mr. Larry asked me to, um, do the capital outlay because he wasn't quite sure on how to, to say that, so what we need to also, um, vote on is anything that, up to $500,000 that was left over from this year's budget will go into capital outlay, so we need to vote on that. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, Mr. Ronnie?
Yes.
Ms. Tori?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Abby?
Yes.
Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Ms. Summer?
Yes.
Okay, that passed.
All right, uh... I'm not feeling good, that's not an excuse, but anyway, uh, I would like personally consolidate this next issue. Uh, I polled the board and, uh, uh, we're gonna all vote to, uh, move these books up. I would like to have it all in one motion, all the books, if the board agrees, but everybody will be able to have their, uh, say.
It won't matter.
No, well, I know, but, uh...
They don't give one rat's cat's no.
No, that's not right.
You just listened to an entire room full of people begging you to make a different choice, and you couldn't do it.
You go down a budget just to have a budget, essentially.
So improper.
Mr. Chairman. Huh? That, that's over with, okay? I just wanna cut this meeting short, but everybody can have their say, okay? You're right, we made up our minds. I've read the books and all. I know what I wanna vote, okay? And I know how I'm gonna vote. I don't usually do this. I made up my mind, and that's the way I'm gonna vote. It doesn't matter, I don't hate to say this, but it doesn't really matter what anyone says, okay? I'm being honest with you, okay? I don't mind people saying their speech, okay? But anyway... Well, we can go at line item if you want. Are you still talking about the budget?
No, let's...
Uh, we're talking about books.
Go ahead with the, go ahead with the motion, Mr. Ronnie, or now, um, are you, do you wanna let him do public comment before the book or after?
I think we need to have public comment, David.
Okay, David, you wanna go ahead and do that first?
On seven eight?
Yeah.
Okay. On seven eight, uh...
Y'all wanna do it that way? Okay.
Man Jones, uh, in opposition, I would like to speak Mary Foyle, in opposition, I would like to request Julia Cooper, in opposition, I would like to speak Loxie Doolittle, in opposition, I would like to speak Tim Elsie, Marla Elsie, uh, in opposition, we'd like to speak Mandy J. Pickering.
Mandy J. Pickering, Watson. I'm seeking on behalf of the library, uh, I'm sorry, the Livingston Parish Library Alliance. We are a nonpartisan organization of Livingston Parish community members whose mission it is to support and amplify the work of the Livingston Parish library system. We have members from all races, religions, political backgrounds, and socioeconomic status. While we are all different, we share a love of reading and a love of our public library. We recognize all community members' rights to submit reconsideration requests. It is a right we are all afforded. However, after carefully reading the professional reviews as well as reading the books, we find significant literary value in all five of these books. All five books are written with teens in mind and are found in the teen section where they belong. Most of the five have been in our library for decades and have won numerous awards. Undoubtedly, you will hear from people who have not read the books, who have taken con- passages out of context, and perhaps will read excerpts out of context to create shock and awe and declare, to declare them unfit, sorry. We would like to remind the public that not everyone will like every book, and not everyone will approve of every book for their teen. However, we'd also like to remind the public that we have a tiered library card system that allows every parent the right to decide what their own child can and cannot check out. Parents must fill out the materials restriction form as part of the process for obtaining a library card for a minor. These books are in the teen section, and parents need to be responsible for monitoring their minors or their children's usage of the library. We suspect, or now we know, that these books will not, um, be taken as a whole, that professional reviews will not be considered, nor will any accolades they have achieved. It appears to us that the book challenges are solely meant to sow distrust in the library. This is just another part of the ongoing saga to hurt the library and distract. We fear this is just the beginning. We, at the Livingston Parish Library Alliance, respectfully ask you to keep these books in their intended section and to trust our dedicated library workers. We thank all Livingston Parish library employees for their dedication to our community.
In opposition, I would like to speak Nick Thornton. In opposition, would like to speak Jessica Legath.
Jessica Legath, town of Livingston. So, I, I'm very torn on these books. I believe no book should ever be banned. I believe parents should be parents and should monitor what their kids doing. Personally, I've, I've read some of these books. Um, I, do I necessarily want my child reading them? No, but at the same time, I also have the reality to know that my fourteen-year-old, fixing to be fifteen-year-old, is probably talking about these things, specifically one of the books about suicide, they're having these conversations, and so I think as parents, you utilize the tier system, you monitor what your kids are doing. I'd much rather my kid be in the library reading a book about some of these inappropriate potentially topics than outdoing God knows what. So, that is my two cents as a parent. So, I leave it in your hands to make the best decision for where these books lie, but I think ultimately, you can't leave it, you, you can't expect the library to watch all the kids that come in and out, and at the end of the day, a parent should be a parent monitoring what their kid's doing, utilizing that system that is in place to assign what your kids can and cannot read. So, that's just my two cents on that. I just don't wanna see anything banned, and thank you.
In opposition, would like to speak Ms. Rita.
Hi. I'm back again. I was a librarian here for twenty-one years. I was a librarian at LSU for eighteen. When I came here to work in a public library, I realized I was gonna deal with all kinds of people that had all kinds of requests that they wanted to read. I ordered the books for this library for twenty years. I did not discriminate and say, oh, I couldn't order this kinda book because of this kinda material. No, you can't do that, because you're cutting away from what per, people wanna have. You know, you cannot do that to patrons. You have to give them what they want. So, I did, for twenty years, and they were happy with that. Well, guess what? I also found out about all kinds of materials and books from my patrons that said, oh, have you ever read this? Have you ever read that? They come and ask me what to find that was like a certain author. Guess what? I had to learn how to read different kinda books. I read all kinds of books and learned from that. My knowledge and my learning increased by reading and learning what was out there. Not everything was out there I agreed with and I wanted to be like, but that didn't matter. You have to be open-minded when you're a librarian or an educated person to see what other people want and to find what they want. If you start cutting things out, guess what? You better start looking in your Bible. There's Jezebel, there's Postitudes, there's War, there's Sodom and Gomorrah, there's all kinds of bad stuff in the Bible. Are you gonna cut out the Bible and put it in a special place? I don't think so. You know, you gotta look and see what people want. Books about breast cancer, you talk about the breast. Oh, that might be obscene to some people, but you know what? That's teaching people about things. Those books that are there, if there's one about suicide, my first husband killed himself. I wish I had learned and read that book, because I might've understood some of the things that I had to deal with during that time. There are so many young people that are killing themselves today. They're overdosing and dying. There are so many people that are having things happen that are changing in their lives. If these teenagers and young people can't look at some of these books and learn what's in them and see what kinda things are out there, who knows what might happen to them? So, we have to look at not just the content, but what it might help somebody else with. Teach them knowledge. When you cut out things, you cut out knowledge. When you cut out resources and books, you cut out learning. Think about that. I don't believe in censorship. I'm a librarian that goes with the ALA way of doing things.
In opposition, would like to speak Caitlin Roberts.
Oh, I'm Caitlin Roberts from Watson. Sorry, I'm out of breath. Uh, my question is, why are we putting it entirely in our librarians' hands for their own continued education when we cannot trust outside experts if they would require any of the budget? But for this, and the books being on the shelf, we can't trust them with that. You don't have to answer, that's fine.
In opposition, I would like to speak Captain Hyde. In opposition, would like to speak Jordan Gonzalez. And that's the last one on this side.
Good afternoon, again, board. Jordan Gonzalez, Dillon Springs. Uh, I just wanted to get up here, um, you know, I know y'all are gonna do what you gotta do, so, but I disagree with it, just to state that, but for the most part, I just wanna thank Michelle and the rest of the, uh, the rest of the library staff. They work really hard. Um, I know all this political circus is a lot, but there's people who really, really, really appreciate what y'all are doing, the services, and all the festivals, and all the stuff, the people who show up to everything, y'all come in and day in and day out and do that work, and you real, you're, you are the ones who serve this community, not elected officials. You do the day-to-day work, the hard work, and this community appreciates you regardless of how this vote, or this board, or the parish council votes. So, thank you all.
That's it, Mr. Ronnie?
Okay.
That's it for seven eight.
All right.
Well, I mean, do we, does anybody else wanna talk on any of the other books? And Mr. Ronnie can make the motion. Mr. Ronnie, go ahead.
Wanna do them all?
Yeah. Well, if that's what you wanna do, yeah?
Yeah. Well, I don't wanna make the motion, somebody...
I'll second it.
I'm not making the motion, I don't...
I'll make the motion.
The motion to, um, just go ahead and, and make the, the judgment on all the books at one time.
All right, a yes vote is to remove them.
To move them to the adult section of the library.
Yeah.
Well, shouldn't we vote...
Do we got a second?
Shouldn't we vote to, to have it to where we can vote like that?
If y'all wanna go ahead and, yeah, we can do that?
I don't, I don't know of anything that says we can't do it. I don't know.
Okay.
We've done, we've collected before...
Yeah.
Had a, took the whole group into consideration. We've done it before.
Mark Twain will be next. Mark Twain will be next.
No man, no man.
Yep. There's words in that, in those books.
Make the motion.
Who made the motion?
Summer, you made the motion, motion to do, and who seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Ronnie?
Yes.
Ms. Tori?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Abby?
Yes.
Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Ms. Summer?
Yes.
Okay, that's it? And that's, that's it, Mr. Ronnie? Oh, wait, oh, sorry, there is one sur, there is one surplus item, I'm sorry, Dustin.
Oh, Dustin comes up?
Yeah. One surplus, one thing to surplus.
The back of your packet, uh, good eve, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Uh, the back of your packet you should have, instead of a list like we normally have, because of the fire panel, when we removed it was broken into a million pieces, just like a million pieces, I didn't think you guys wanted to look at a spreadsheet that was three pages long, serial numbers, but I took a picture of you, it's a box of stuff. We were replacing the fire panels at the Dillon Springs Walker and Watson branches to get them more up to code, and so that's the remnants of the old ones. I just want to get rid of those and get them out of admin. Any questions?
I make the motion to remove the surplus items.
Second?
Second.
Summer, thank you. Mr. Ronnie?
Yes.
Ms. Tori?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Abby?
Yes.
Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Ms. Summer?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ronnie, I'm sorry, Dustin, now you're done.
No more.
Now you can adjourn.
All right, y'all wanna stand up or vote? All right, huh? You wanna vote it?
All right.
All right. All to adjourn.
Mr. Ronnie?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Tori?
Yes, please.
Mr. Larry?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ms., do, 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 Ms. Abby?
Yes.
Mr. Steve?
Yes.
Ms. Summer?
Yes.
All right, we're done.